Personally, by the support of various sponsors such as Mr. I have had the capability to explore my interest in.
I'd like to call back to session, the August 21st, 2018 meeting of the County Board of Supervisors. My clerk, take a roll, please.
Supervisors Frost.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay, and then I realized after we recessed that we should have had a vote on item 49. I only read the receive and file sentence, but for approving the strategy and the signature sheet and the plan progress.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
As I was fixated on receiving file, so, next item, please.
Okay, item 50 is the SES Robotics Workshop Presentation.
Mr. Natoli, I think this is yours. Did you want to start anything, or do we have a teacher coming forward?
I'm gonna have a teacher come forward. Just would note that, see a lot of students here, I'm sure they'll be introduced in a moment, but this is a program that is being offered throughout the county, and I'll leave it to our guests here to talk a little bit about the program and, you know, what it's doing for certainly our young people that are interested in science, technology, engineering, math, and other related pursuits, so.
Hi, good morning, or afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name's Ken Davis. I am the Lead Engineering Teacher at the School of Engineering and Sciences, where we have a thriving robotics program.
Sorry, what school?
The School of Engineering and Sciences.
Oh, that's the name of the school, okay.
That's the name, yeah. We, my team, it consists of high schools, juniors, and seniors, and they present, they created a presentation here today to show thanks to Board Member Natoli for supporting us in our endeavors and in our outreach program. So without any further ado, I'll turn it over to my students.
He was practicing while we were gone, so he's gonna be really good.[338.36][338.36](Laughter).
Good afternoon, members of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Don Natoli, and everyone in attendance, thank you for your time. My name is Christopher Thomas, and this is Sophia Agdigos. We are students from the School of Engineering and Sciences and are members of our school's FIRST Robotics Program. FIRST stands for, for the Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology, and is a nonprofit organization. Their mission is to inspire young people to be science and technology leaders and innovators by engaging them in exciting mentor-based programs that build science, engineering, and technology skills, that inspire innovation, and that foster well-rounded life capabilities, including self-confidence, communication, and leadership. Over 75% of FIRST alumni acquire a professional career in the STEM industry, and 87% of its participants plan to take a more challenging math or science course in school.
Through our robotics team, we not only provide access to FIRST, to a large population of younger students in surrounding schools, but also increase access to FIRST to students at our own school. Roughly 15% of our school's student body participates in a FIRST program, but our approach to education through a linked learning model has given all of our students access to the technologies we use in FIRST, so that if they never join a robotics program, they have the exposure to make informed decisions about their future career and educational choices.
We have worked to introduce our community to STEM as well, through a series of workshops. Workshops are some of our most impactful and well-received community events, because they allow us to introduce new students to our school and to the FIRST program.
By partnering with the Sacramento Library and Mr. Don Natoli, we've been able to host cost-free workshops for students in lower-income and rural areas. By doing this, we have been able to increase the diversity of both our team and students entering our school, as well as expand their access to FIRST. Our key workshops have been the San Joaquin Delta Region, San Joaquin Delta's workshops, and our Sacramento County Youth Probation Department workshop. All of our workshops in the San Joaquin Delta region take place in very rural areas, where students do not have access to FIRST or STEM opportunities. Lastly, in our Sacramento County Youth Probation Department workshop, we focus on a demographic of students not typically targeting STEM. We choose to highlight these workshops specifically, because they are prime examples of our mission to educate the world around us about STEM through low-cost, sustainable initiatives.
Personally, by the support of various sponsors such as Mr. Natoli, I've had the capability to explore my interest in 3D design and further my technological skills. Only 17% of black men graduate college with a bachelor's degree, and only 4.8% of the STEM industry consists of black males. Based on these statistics, it is very unlikely that a young man like myself will not successfully enter into the STEM industry. But with the support of teachings found in these STEM programs, such as FIRST and SES's linked learning approach to education, students like myself are three times as likely to pursue a STEM career. I'm one of the millions of students who have been impacted by STEM programs, and I graciously hope that you all, the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, will support our program to ensure its success, the success of our future goals as a society, and the success of the diversification of the STEM industry.
To be able to stand here today and speak about my personal experience in FIRST robotics is both an honor and a privilege. Through the School of Engineering and Sciences Robotics Program, I am able to explore, expand, and most importantly, solidify techniques and problem-solving abilities. It has opened a variety of college and career pathways that I wouldn't have been to, haven't been exposed to without it. Team 3598's initiative to provide a low-cost program accessible to students of varying low-income backgrounds has allowed me to join, despite having the income of a single-parent household. This low-cost initiative wouldn't be possible without the nature of such a supportive community. I would like to take this moment to thank Mr. Don Natoli himself for supporting and continuing to support this program. It provides the opportunity for students like myself, a first-generation American student, to be exposed to industry-standard equipment and software. We are also able to give that opportunity to many other students of similar backgrounds. This can be best described by what our mentor, Mr. Davis, calls "a sense of volunteerism", which we have defined by giving back to the community that helped raise us. This program is much more than building robots. It's also about building character that will last a lifetime.
Once again, we thank you for your time, and hope that our words have encouraged you to support our great program, and help us showcase the ingenuity of Sacramento County's brightest students. Thank you.
Thank you.
We would like to present Mr. Natoli with a collage and photo book of the events that he has helped sponsor, as well as a medal that was received by our team and is awarded due to our commitment to community outreach.
Okay. Do you want to go down, Mr. Natoli?
I will, just, I'll make some comments when I get to it.
That's wonderful. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much, very nice.
Would you like to?
Get a medal, might as well, sure.[705.52][705.52](Laughter).
And here's one of our workshops for this season.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you all very much, and let me just, just say that this is about you, not about me, and I would say to you that I had an opportunity to, obviously, you, Mr. Davis, and Burden, and some others, a couple of years ago, and to talk about this program, and obviously, I imagine Supervisor Kennedy, who is in the auspices of, you know, Sac City Schools, probably very familiar with this program, but what they've done is take it out into the community, as the two of you stated, and it's been an opportunity to see young folks, certainly down in the Sacramento River Delta, and the Galt communities, and the rural areas, but also in the probation department, to get an opportunity, either on a Saturday workshop, or maybe with additional follow-on, to get exposed to the sciences, but also, I think, some of the things you heard about here, that the teamwork, the team-building, the character-building that goes with, certainly, an extended program. I would note, too, that our clerk, Flo Evans, was party to one of the days when they actually had volunteers out there, didn't you, when they built a little go-kart or something, didn't you?
I did have an opportunity to drive the go-kart, and it was really fun, and then I also made a LED thing.[794.56][794.56](Laughter).
And I might say, too, that, you know, it's very hands-on, and that, and maybe you could just take another moment and share briefly, because they, we were able to work into Sacramento County Library System, and I want to also give credit, certainly Terrific SAS, and to our librarians in those communities of Cortland, Walnut Grove, and Galt, for, they took out a 3D printer, and that's part of the experience, in addition to some of the other hands-on experiences, and I know through working with the libraries, we were able to, again, purchase a 3D printer that was available to folks in those communities, and it's not just for young people, it's for their parents as well, to invite them in, and I think a fabulous opportunity to, to come together for a brief time, but also to learn more about, and hopefully to pique people's interest to go into maybe some more non-traditional work roles, but ones where we need bright young people from all walks of life, and certainly all cultures, to be a part of that. So I would just note, too, that it's our tax dollars at work, it's our hotel, motel, tax money, it comes through the Community Investment Program, and again, I don't see any better investment than certainly working with our young people and their mentors, and bringing this to our community. So again, I compliment each and every one of you, and thank you for being here today, obviously taking time out of, I guess you're all back in school, right? Yeah? No, not yet, oh, so you're coming out of your free time, so that's really impressive, so, obviously shows your dedication, but thank you so much, thanks to your leadership team, and again, would welcome any of my colleagues to take, you know, a Saturday, a portion of a Saturday, come out and see what they do, or have them come in and visit with you, you'll be very impressive, I'm sure you are today, so, thanks so very much.
Would they all like to come up to the microphone and say their names, and where they're going to high school, or?
Yeah.
My name is Robert Leone, and I'm going to the School of Engineering and Sciences.
Maybe they're grade.
My name is Derek Solario, and I'm going to the School of Engineering and Sciences.
Why don't you say your grade?
My name is Daniel Leone, and I'm a senior at the School of Engineering and Sciences.
My name is Chu Hr, and I'm a senior at Engineering and Sciences.
My name is Joanne Calderon, and I'm a senior at the School of Engineering and Sciences.
My name is Kenya Collins, and I am a senior at the School of Engineering and Science, and in robotics, I am on the manufacturing team.
Awesome.
My name is Anastasia Yang, and I'm a senior at the School of Engineering and Sciences.
My name is Elizia Yashewicz, and I'm a senior at the School of Engineering and Sciences, and I'm on the electrical team.
My name is Autumn Zhang, and I am a senior at the School of Engineering and Science.
My name is Natalia Ramirez, I am a senior at the School of Engineering and Sciences, and in robotics, I am part of the sport team.
My name is Adam America, and I'm at the school, I'm a 10th gr, 11th grader at the School of Engineering and Sciences, and I'm part of the CAD team.
Is that everybody? Nobody chickened out?
Yes.
I'd also like to add my role. I'm Christopher, as you already know, I'm a senior, and I'm on the 3D design team.
My name is Sophia Agdigos, I'm a senior at the School of Engineering and Sciences, and I'm part of the CAD team.
Great.
My name is Ajayata King, and I'm a senior at the School of Engineering and Sciences, I'm on the electrical team.
Anything else, Mr. Davis, anything else you wanted to add before you give me a picture? My name is Ken Davis, and (laugh) again, I wanted to point out that, as you can see, my team consists of juniors and seniors. For those of you unfamiliar with the School of Engineering and Sciences, we are grade seven through 12. So we have the unique opportunity of our, our students on campus actually mentoring our younger students. So these students don't only go out into the community, they also do outreach within our own school. And, you know, I couldn't be prouder of the kids that you see up before you today.
That's cool. Hold on a second, so she can get a picture from the front.
Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
I didn't do all of this on my own. I have mentors that, that, this program wouldn't be possible without my mentors. Because the school is so young, I have the fortunate opportunity of having young mentors, and some of them are here before you today. Can you guys come up, introduce yourselves?
Hi, I'm Gabriela Vargas, and I'm a third-year mechanical engineering major at the California Polytech State University, also known as Cal Poly Slow.
All right, go Mustangs.
Hi, I'm Peter Mylan, and I go to UC Davis, I'm a second-year mechanical engineering student.
My name is Latelli Finau, and I'm a freshman, I go to CRC.
My name is Samantha Height, I'm a freshman going to CSU Sacramento.
My name is Windo Trans, and I'm a second year of the School of UC Davis, and my major is electrical engineering.
Well, this repeats on television at 6 o'clock on Friday night.[1168.48][1168.48](Laughter) If you know what television is, I don't know if you guys watch that.
It's a live stream, I think it's on the tele.
Something like that, so, you can tell your parents to watch you on television, there you go. Did you want to come up front and take a picture? Come up into the well, and, yeah. Tall people in back. Donna, want you to find Instagram.[1232.16][1232.16](Laughter).
Are you sure? Is that somebody's cellphone? Am I taking?
Yeah. Okay.
Sorry. Sorry. Maybe that's too much. Smile a little tighter, okay? I have to. Now, nice. I got it. Okay.
Will we hear next item?
Okay, item number.
Tell later.
Item number 51. You are acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency. Introduction of an Ordinance Amending Chapter 3.2 and Chapter 3.5 of Title III of the Sacramento County Water Agency Code, Increasing Water Services Fees. Way full reading and continue to September 11th for adoption.
Good mor, or good afternoon, excuse me, Michael Peterson, Department of Water Resources. I do have a very brief PowerPoint to be brought up. The item today is for your board to consider adoption of an ordinance that would enact a three-year rate increase for the water agency's Zone 41 water user fee. On June 19th of this year, staff was directed by your board to proceed with the Proposition 218 process for the proposed three-year rate increase for the Zone 41 water fee. Subsequent to that, or after that, we proceeded with outreach through direct mailings to all of our customers, as well as newspaper advertisements, online information on our website, as well as establishment of an interactive rate calculator, so that folks could go online and see how their rate might change depending on their use type. As of July 25th, we'd received 31 written protests, and an update from that, as of this morning, we'd received 78 written protests, and one written letter of support for the rate increase. I think that's the first time we've ever had a written letter of support on the rate increase, and we provided a response to each of those. Pursuant to Prop, to Proposition 218, the increase would not be able to move forward if the total number of protests, written protests received was a majority of the customers. In this case, that would be 78 out of approximately 54,000 customers, so it doesn't meet that threshold. It's just a quick reminder, this map, the orange area is the Zone 41 service area, primary area is in the south part of the county, including Rancho Nevada, City Velk Grove, and the unincorporated area in between. In addition, we have Metro Air Park, area of North Gate, Arden, Hood, a portion of Walnut Grove, and a very small area, it's called the Southwest Track, it's basically the corner of Fruit Ridge and Stockton Boulevard. The proposed rate increase is shown here in the table for a typical residential metered and non-metered residential customer. Over the next three years, the proposed rates, rate increases are as follows. For a typical metered customer, the rate would increase by approximately $1.53 per month. For an un-metered customer, it would increase by $1.68 per month. That would be effective October 1st, 2018. July 1st, 2019, an additional increase of $1.52 per month for a typical metered resident, and $1.68 per month for a typical un-metered. And then the third year, July 1st, 2020, a similar increase, $1.52 per month for metered residential customer, $1.67 per month for an un-metered residential customer. The table is just reflective, for simplicity, to show a typical metered customer impact, but the full gamut of increases for all customer types are included in Attachments 3, 4, and 5 of the staff report. In addition, that includes the new commercial landscape irrigation connection rate, which is a new rate that's been added, as well as a revised conservation discount. This graphic shows sort of the 10-year rate projection, starting on the left with the current rate. The stack, there's two bars, the upper bar is the Zone 41 rate, which we are currently talking about today, and it shows this year, and then the subsequent three years with the increases. Past 2021, there's no increase that's being proposed, however, we, as we've discussed, we will need to come back to your board to talk about funding a large portion of our capital improvement program, and depending on how that discussion goes, and how funding is sourced there, we would have to discuss possibly a different funding strategy, but there's nothing proposed as far as rate increases with that right now. The bar on the bottom half shows the Zone 40 user fee, which is, which is separate from Zone 41, but there is an overlay where most of our customers are also in Zone 41. Zone 41 pays for basically the capital debt on the Freeport and Vineyard projects, doesn't pay for anything else. That is not changing, but for the benefit of those customers who are in both areas, we just wanted to show that in this graphic as well. The primary purposes of the Zone 41 rate increase, as has been discussed previously, stabilize, we need stabilized revenues, while meeting demand trends that have changed, conservation requirements that have increased, and to avoid major spikes when we get in dire conditions with either drought or large capital failures. We want to reestablish deferred maintenance, with the intent to improve service delivery and extend facility life, supporting replacement of some critically aged infrastructure, continue to meet the increasing state regulatory requirements for water treatment, and water monitoring, and water use, and to continue to provide safe and effective delivery of potable water to our customers in a financially and operationally accountable manner. We are very concerned with the price that our customers are charged, but we are also concerned with providing the appropriate service needed for an urban water provider, and the proposed rate increase is intended to meet both of those intents. Recommended action is to introduce the ordinance that would amend Water Agency Code to allow for this three-year increase in the Zone 41 rate, open the public hearing, consider any testimony and protests related to the increase, that your board would make a finding that the protests that have been received do not meet the majority protest threshold under Proposition 218 that would prohibit the fee increase from occurring, close the hearing, and continue for adoption on September 11th, 2018, at 9:30 a.m. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Any questions? Oh, Mr. Natoli?
Thank you, I'm sure. Thank you, Michael. I did have a chance, at least with the transmittal came over on Friday, I believe, the 71 letters at that time, a protest, and wanted to thank you and your staff for providing those, and I did note, obviously, the one on top of the stack was the letter of support, but I did want to also just call attention that, in reading through that, would just call out that probably three-quarters of them are from District 5 residents, Rancho Nevada, Al Grove, some in the Vineyard area, and get a variety of comments about rate increases in general, and just, I think, some specific to what was being proposed by the agency. I did want to ask, though, and I appreciate the follow-up that came this morning, based upon a question on the lifeline rates, because some of those letters did express. upon a question on the lifeline rates, because some of those letters did express financial hardship, whether it fits within the criteria—excuse me—of the—of our, you know, lifeline rate program or not. I'm not sure. I trust we will sort that out. But I did want to raise the question because it's been now 10, I guess almost 11 years since we actually put that program in place. Obviously, it's been in effect, and if I do the math—excuse me—do the math correctly, about 3.5% of our customers are, you know, qualified for that program. But I know there's been some changes to the approach we've taken at the sanitation district. We are now looking at the potential for renters, obviously not without some difficulty, because typically this is assigned to property owners, and that's been traditionally for water, sewer, and garbage, any lifeline assistance, telephone, or any other utility. But I guess what I was going to suggest is that, again, we have this established, it's been adopted, you've been applying it correctly, but the income requirements and I guess the vendor that we use to help with the paperwork through the SMUD program in the state agency that assists, whether we can at least relook at that, see where we are, where we fall, it's a—I think it's a $7 a month potential flat rate assistance to qualified customers, and it's based upon, obviously, family income and family size. But I would ask, maybe we take a look at that, make sure that we've kept that current. I trust we have, but I don't know that it's all current. And we might want to also touch base then with anything that SMUD may have done in the intervening period of time since we first adopted this back in 2007, as well as the sanitation district, to see if there's been any refinement of their programs. It may not be applicable to the water agency. Obviously, we have a smaller customer base, but I do think it's important, particularly, I think in light of some of the comments I read from folks who are on fixed incomes and, you know, any increase, whether it's a buck and a half a month, or, you know, the rise in the cost of bread or a gallon of milk can affect folks who don't have any other discretionary income available to them. So, again, it's for those that are in need, and we have a qualifying set of factors here. So I guess my bottom line request to that is that if we could take a look at that and maybe have a report back, either via, you know, a memo to this board, or if it requires further consideration sometime between now and the next time this, you know, the next rate increase is proposed under this calendar here.
Certainly, I think we can do that and certainly get a report back to you by the end of this year. I think that's easily done.
Okay, very good. That's all I had, ma'am chair.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. So I'm going to open the public hearing. I don't—I don't have any requests to speak up here. If anyone wishes to speak to this issue, please come forward. I'll close the public hearing. Any further comments from the board? Motion would be in order.
I think I've expressed my concerns about this, but I do think in light of the discussion we had last time, I would move the item. Acknowledging, obviously, the concerns expressed by Ray Pears.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Item 52 is the Sugarman Rezone and Parcel Map, a rezone and tentative parcel map for a property located at 7101 Slough House Road on the southeast corner of Slough House Road and Jackson Road in the Kasumnas community. The environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
Good afternoon, Chair Peters, board members. Chris Puhuli with your Office of Planning and Environmental Review. I do also have a short presentation for you. It's my pleasure to present this item, which is the Sugarman Rezone and Tinitive Parcel Map. The subject site is located at 7101 Slough House Road, southeast corner of Slough House Road and Jackson Road in the Kasumnas community. The request before you for consideration is a rezone of 145 acres from Ag 80 to 41 acres of Ag 40 and 104 acres of Ag 20. Also, a tentative parcel map to create four ag lots, including 141-acre parcel in the Ag 40 zone and three parcels in the Ag 20 zone, which are 40, 45, and 20 acres respectively. And then finally, a design review to comply with countywide design guidelines. Have a couple of exhibits to show you. The first on the right shows a current aerial of the subject property. There is—you can't really see it too well, but there is a existing residence on the upper —or the northwestern portion of the subject site. The exhibit on the left shows the current zoning of the—of the area, including the properties to the west, which are predominantly Ag 20 and A2, again, to the west of the subject site that is outlined in red. The rezone exhibit shows the Ag 40 designation, which is on the eastern portion of the—of the property—or of the subject property, and the Ag 20 designation on the western portion of the property. And then finally, the tentative parcel map, which details the four proposed—four proposed lots. Proposed parcel D, which again is on the eastern portion of the subject site, follows the Ag 40 designation, and then proposed parcels A, B, and C are on the western portion of the—of the site. Want to review the key points for this request with you. The project site is currently encumbered with a Williamson Act contract. A notice of partial nonrenewal was recorded in January 2018 for 104 acres or for proposed parcels A, B, and C. The nonrenewal will be effective in 2027. Proposed parcel D, which is approximately 41 acres, would remain under the Williamson Act contract. The subdivision map act does allow subdivision of properties under a Williamson Act contract, and the proposed parcels do meet the required findings in order to be subdivided. Also, as noted in the report, the applicant is proposing to comply with the mitigation measures related to Swainson's Hawk Habitat by establishing a conservation easement on roughly 26 acres on proposed parcel D. The project was reviewed by the county's Design Review Administrator, who found the site to be in compliance with the countywide design guidelines. The Kasumnas CPAC did meet and is recommending approval of the request. They are recommending approval unanimously. Then on June 25th, the Planning Commission approved the request—or approved recommending the request—with a modification to Condition of Approval 29, which has been updated in your—in your staff report package. I should also note that your report details comments that staff did receive from an adjacent property owner prior to the Planning Commission meeting related to a communication line and some mislabeling on the parcel map. Staff has met with the neighbor to discuss the rationale for not including a condition on the relocation of a communication line, and the map has been modified to the satisfaction of the neighboring property owner. In reviewing the recommendations before you, staff is recommending that the board open and close the public hearing, that you determine the mitigated negative declaration is adequate and adopt the document along with the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and then that the board adopt—or approve—the rezone—the tentative parcel map, and finally find the project in compliance with countywide design guidelines. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I should also note that the—that the applicant's representative is here and can answer questions as well.
Mr. Natale has a question.
Thank you, ma'am chair. So, Chris, as it relates to the creation of the three parcels, and the notice of nonrenewal has been filed.
Correct.
So, the creation of parcels, and I trust there's a vested, obviously, development right that goes with that as it relates to a house and maybe accessory dwellings and farm buildings and such, that that's allowed during the intervening time, because the notice was only given this year for nonrenewal. That's a nine-year countdown, and so as the staff report outlines, it'll be 2027 before the cancellation—or basically, the contract expires at that point in time for three-quarters of the property. So, is there any requirement—because, you know, again, nonrenewal doesn't—they still get the benefits marching out of that relative to any tax benefits that accrue for lands that are within the Williamson contract conservation program. Are they then allowed to sell the properties and to actually develop them with, you know, whatever?
That is correct. They are able to sell them, and they are able to develop with a primary residence on each parcel.
So what about the farmability under the prospects of the Williamson Act during that intervening period of time, though?
My understanding is that because of the size of the parcels, that those still can be—still can be—can be farmed. They're grazeland, they're non-prime land, and so that's part of the findings that are being made, or that they are adequate for—for that purpose.
So then the contract—which was a 1970 contract—under the auspices of that, then the creation of the additional lots and whatever farming practices exist there on the—I guess it's the uplands portion of the property, then that—there's no additional requirements for?
No, they're not. It's still—it's still under contract until 2027.
And there's tax benefits that accrue to that.
That's correct.
So they—those accrue then now to individual property owners, because the contract considered that as all-in-one property. And it used to be we required some sort of a joint management agreement if it was going to—you know, if you were going to have the housing portion envelope that was going to be created for, you know, the residency on the farmstead. So how is that part of parcel? Because you're basically creating by this, creating four parcels from one. They're under—the umbrella of a contract is under nonrenewal, but they're still under the same contract.
That's correct.
And so—and then the one property will be retained in the Williamson Act because it's not a part of nonrenewal. I guess I'm just curious, so how does that accrue to the subsequent property owners when you create new parcels and nonrenewal's been filed for?
Yeah, I'm not quite sure. We could do a report back after speaking with the assessor's office unless county council has any opinions about the matter.
It's a little bit different from what we typically see under the Williamson Act. I mean, typically, you may create parcels for farmability or for, you know, sale to another farmer landlord, and sometimes there are development rights that accrue to this. But basically, we're by virtue of what would be asked here today and that's being recommended, and I don't necessarily oppose it, but I just—that you're, you know, now going to, you know, basically infer additional developability of those parcels under the ag auspices, and yet they're under—still under one Williamson contract. So I guess—is there any modification that goes with that, so the property owner buys that, knows that? I mean, besides disclosure? I guess, Krista, may I look to you? I don't—you know?
Again, my understanding is that it continues to go—if they do decide to sell the property, that it does carry on with the new owner, those requirements.
Well, who's the holder of the contract? So that accrues to the next property owner? So basically, you got four divisions under one—under one Williamson Act contract? There's no—there's no new contract, because you're basically—nonrenewal's been filed for. I guess I'm just curious. Typically, people march out and then they do their development, you know, or they count themselves out of the—
Yeah, my understanding is it does run with the land.
The Williamson Act?
Correct.
It does?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
I would kind of relate to—I was thumbing through it, though. It doesn't look like—and I'm sorry I didn't miss this—that I didn't find this earlier, but I'm looking at attachment to the findings, and it doesn't look like they captured the finding that's required under the Williamson Act, that you can approve a subdivision with a parcel smaller than those specified if it can nevertheless sustain an agricultural use. And I'm not sure, is it less—are there parcels that are less—that are prime that are less than 20 acres that we have to make that finding?
No. No, they're—these are non-prime.
It's all non-prime?
Correct.
Okay, I don't know why that's in the staff report, then. So we don't need to make that finding?
No.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. I don't see any other questions from the board members?
Well, actually, I'm sorry. So we do need to make that finding—
But county council would like to say something.
—because it says that parcel—it's presumed that parcels containing non-prime soil shall be no less than 40 acres in size—
Right.
—unless you make a particular finding.
Right.
And we—so here you are looking at a parcel less than 40 acres, but there isn't a finding—we can do that on the record here, but we need to make a finding that the parcels cannot nevertheless sustain an agricultural use permitted under the contract under this 66474.4. So we need to include that in the findings if the board is inclined to approve this.
Okay. Because that goes to the farmability. That's the whole thing between your—
Yes.
—your soil categories and whether you can—
Right, that's what allows us to do it, but we need to—but the board would need to make that specific finding.
Okay.
It's on page 10 of the findings and conditions, which is Attachment 4 to the Planning Commission report.
Which condition is it?
It's not a condition, that's what I'm saying.
You made—you had a turn.
It's referenced in the—in the Planning Commission staff report on page 10, but it didn't look like it was added as a finding, which we would need to add that as a finding. And I can do that when—if the board is inclined to approve.
When we get to a motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'm sorry, ma'am chair. Just one other thing, if I could. On Slough House Road, we've had some previous developments, five-acre developments further to the—to the south. And what we've done there, because—and I noticed in the report, and I'd be pleased to see it if it happens by then, but advisory notice on Condition 20 on Attachment 2 about the asphalt-concrete overlay is scheduled between 2016 and 2021. We're two years into that, and there's probably other priorities. But my point being is that what we did on a couple of the previous developments, rather than have them widen out and have a pavement section that basically goes unused, is to—if you need to have additional shoulder to actually have a contribution to the overlay project, which we did further to the south, again, you get to dedicate it right of way. You may even get the gravel placement for a shoulder. But rather than have this new paved section that widens the road, that's better than most of the road, if not all of it, that if we can put the money and have that actually and work with DOT—Mike, and you may have been part of that when we had a couple of the Sheldon divisions some years back, Sheldon Estates, I think it was, Unit 2. We did that. We still got to dedicate it right of way, and there was a little additional shoulder, but we didn't go ahead and just make this gigantic shoulder that, you know, puts the extra 10 feet on, is that we actually worked with DOT to get a better section of road that's a travelable section, and you don't have this kind of isolated or idle piece of asphalt that, again, is the best piece of asphalt out there. So I guess I would ask if we could do that again. This is closer up to Jackson Highway, obviously retains a little more traffic. The firehouse is to the—to the south of here, so probably gets a little more vehicular traffic relative to emergency calls and so forth. But I would ask that maybe we take the right of way appropriately and get any shoulder that you need relative to minimum shoulder width, but that maybe we actually get the development to contribute to that overlay and maybe get it done by 2020. 2021, Stevie. That's all I have. Thanks.
All right. I don't—I need to open—I don't have any further comments from supervisors at the moment. I'll open the public hearing. I don't have any speaker requests, but if someone wishes to speak to this issue, now is your time. Close the public hearing. And I don't see any further comments, Mr. Natale.
Okay. I think with the comments that were added, and certainly the condition that's been suggested by county council—
I can read that.
Okay.
It's not a condition, it would be a project finding.
Okay.
So I'd make this finding 12. The resulting parcels can sustain an agricultural use permitted under the Williamson Act contract.
All right. And I would incorporate that into a motion that would be—that we take the recommended staff recommendation with the conditions of findings, and that we offer to Department Transportation that we work out with the—the project improvements for right of way, that we get a better pavement section on the main part of the road and get what we need as far as right of way. So however that's constructed, but we—I know we worked that in the past. So I move staff recommendation with the findings as outlined.
Second, please vote.
Unanimous vote. Item 53 is a Resolution of Intention Zoning Code Amendment relating to the establishment of the North Market Special Planning Area. Request to adopt a resolution of intention to initiate an amendment to the Sacramento County Zoning Code to establish the North Market Special Planning Area.
Good afternoon. I'm Sorrento Singh, Principal Planner with the Planning and Environmental Review Division, and I do have a PowerPoint presentation for this item. Starting with some background information and also with an overview, the request before your board today is to adopt a resolution of intention to initiate an amendment to the zoning code in order to establish a special planning area ordinance for the North Market area. And the boundary of the North Market area is the— And the boundary of the North Market area is the yellow dotted line that you see on the aerial. The area is generally bounded by I-80 to the south, Gateway Park Drive, I mean, sorry, Gateway Park Boulevard to the west, Del Paso Road to the north, and Northgate Boulevard and East Levy Road to the east. The size of the project area is approximately 837 acres. During our analysis of the area, staff has discovered the following issues. There are three separate parcels and three separate buildings that have split zoning. This is where a portion of the site, or the portion of a parcel, and also a portion of the building is zone M1, and then the remainder portion of the parcel and building is zone MP. So there are split zoning for three separate properties out there. Due to the split zoning, it's been really difficult for staff to provide accurate information to the public regarding permitted, conditionally permitted, or prohibited uses based upon those two zoning categories. We have also had difficulties in regards to reviewing business licenses that are being provided for within the study area. We have also discovered that there is no cohesive zoning pattern within the study area. Looking at the slide here again, there are pockets of MP zoning, which is the pink area that you see on the slide. So this are properties that are zone MP, and the MP zoning is scattered throughout the project area, and it's combined with M1 zoning, which is the red area that you see on the slide itself. We've also noticed that there is an opportunity for us to introduce flexible zoning for the area, and we believe that this can improve the overall economic viability of the area. Staff is recommending an amendment to the zoning code to introduce a special planning area for the North Market area. If adopted, the SBA would provide the following benefits. It would eliminate split zone parcels and building. It would also provide flexibility in permitted uses to attract more businesses and employment opportunities within the study area. Staff is recommending that the board take the following action, which is to adopt a resolution of intention to initiate an amendment to the zoning code in order to establish a special planning area for the North Market area. And also, due to the substantive nature of this item, we're asking your board to take action on this item instead of the planning commission. In regard to next step, the next steps associated with this project, once a draft ordinance is crafted, staff will then meet with the affected property owners, the business owners out there, and the NOTOMA CPAC for review and comments. And then, public hearings will next be conducted before the planning commission, and then this item will finally be brought back to your board for adoption consideration. That concludes my presentation today, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Serna has a question.
Thank you. I'm prepared to move the item. One question, though. How does the explanation of next steps run parallel with the effort underway to annex the property north of this, what is typically called the pan part of the panhandle? You mentioned going out to the property owners as part of the SBA process and doing some outreach. How is that going to calendar relative to what has already been set in motion in terms of likely annexation?
We see this as two separate projects, so we're not going to be addressing any zoning change for properties that are located within the panhandle area. So this are two separate projects.
Okay, so there's, there's no possibility that difficulty in concluding the outreach that is intended with the pan part of this, of the panhandle would interrupt flow of events relative to Lafco's actions?
I don't believe so, but there is going to be a need to do a sequel analysis for this particular project, so that's something that we're going to be looking at down the road.
And I would like to have, we can do this offline, but I would like to have some assurances that it's not going to interrupt the separate yet parallel process for annexation of the handle part of the panhandle.
Definitely. We can do that.
Thanks.
Any other comments?
I've moved the item.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 54 is the Cordova Hills Amendments. Request for a general plan amendment, a bicycle master plan, and a zoning ordinance amendment on approximately 2,668 acres adjacent to the city of Ranch Cordova in the Kasumnas community. The environmental document is an addendum to the final environmental impact report.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Todd Smith with the Office of Planning and Environmental Review, presenting what is a relatively straightforward general plan amendment this afternoon for the Cordova Hills project. As you can see on the slide, the location of Cordova Hills is adjacent to the city of Ranch Cordova's east boundary, which is Grantline Road. The request is essentially three things. One, a general plan amendment to the land use diagram, the designations within the project. The second is another general plan amendment for the bicycle master plan. And the third is some minor language changes in the zoning ordinance, the Cordova Hills Special Planning Area Ordinance. This is an aerial of the project site. You can kind of get your boundaries here, boundaries here. Grantline Road, again, the western boundary of the project. Eastern boundary of the project is over here at Carson Creek, and the urban services boundary is that squiggly black line. So some, some key points about the project here. Why are we doing this is the, the basic question. Essentially, the Cordova Hills project was approved in 2013, went through its own path to get a Army Corps of Engineers wetlands permit through Section 404 of the Clean Water Act. Did consultation with the United States Fish and Wildlife Service. In parallel, the project applicant was working with the county's South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan Team to ensure that the onsite wetland preserves and avoidance and minimization measures that were then in draft form in the HCP were being implemented within the Cordova Hills project. So as a result of those two parallel efforts, there were changes needed on the onsite preserves within the project. That is why the land use designation changes are needed. We're picking up roughly 61 acres of preserve land within the project. The second reason we're here is the bicycle master plan amendment. As part of the, both the HCP and the individual permit process for the applicant, the Fish and Wildlife Service would not permit the onsite trail, that's roughly 1,400 linear feet, that's in the main preserve, the northern preserve of the project, and I've got a graphic here to show you in a minute. Then, as staff was going through this cleanup effort as part of the general plan amendment, we noticed a few language changes that needed to happen within the special planning area ordinance that would really clarify the procedures and mimic what's in the master plan document and the special planning area ordinance. The Kasumnas CPAC met on this project in January, recommended approval unanimously. What's not on the slide, but it's in the staff report, planning commission met on July 9th on this project. Their vote was a four to one vote in favor of the project. And now for the pictures. So the, the graphic on the left is the existing general plan land use designations for the project site. The graphic on the right, get some red ovals here to show you the differences, is what's proposed. So the areas that are outlined in the red ovals and circles represent the increased preserve acreages throughout the site. And then the same for the bicycle master plan. On the left, you have what's existing. This was what was approved in 2013. On the right, you have what's changed. And that red oval, again, is that roughly 1,400 linear feet east-west trail connection that the, was not permitted by the federal agencies. We went through and did a slight bit of environmental analysis. The final EIR concluded that the, this is going back to 2013, concluded that the area preserved as open space was insufficient as, as part of the original approval, and the proposed increase is seen as an environmentally positive effect of the project. And with respect to climate change, we did not do any additional detailed modeling of the removal of that trail. What we did conclude that the final EIR's conclusion with respect to climate change was that it would, the project would have a significant unavoidable environmental effect, and therefore, that conclusion has not changed with the removal of the trail. But in order to mitigate for that removal of the trail segment, staff has worked with the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District, as well as the applicant, to come up with a more robust wayfinding and signage network within the project to encourage folks to use the trails that are being proposed, which are ultimately intended to reduce motorized vehicle traffic. So moving on to the recommendations, obviously, we would ask you to open and close the public hearing. Then determine that the environmental analysis is adequate and complete, and adopt the addendum to the final EIR. We request direction to amend the Cordova Hills mitigation monitoring and reporting program to reflect that revised mitigation measure that we worked out with the air district. Then adopt the attached resolution, this is resolution one, that would amend the general plan land use diagram. Then also adapt, excuse me, adopt the attached resolution two for the bicycle master plan component of the project. And finally, approve the attached ordinance amendment to the Cordova Hills Special Planning Area. And that is the end of my presentation, and be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. I don't have anyone punched up. Anyone have any questions? Okay, then I'm going to open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak to this issue? I don't have any speaker requests. I'll close the public hearing, and back to the board.
Oh.
Oh, Mr. Thatch.
He's the applicant, so do I need to get back into the public hearing business?
No.
Okay.
I don't move as fast as I used to, unfortunately. I just want to, I just want to very briefly say that we're here to answer any questions that you have. This isn't a surprise. We knew back in 2013 that we did not have a 404 permit, and there might need to be some adjustments based upon that 404 permit. We're delighted to have the 404 permit, the biological opinion, and to be 100% consistent with your draft HCP. And I might say the ordinance is a great streamlining mechanism. It allows you to do once what you are currently having to do twice. So with that, Madam Chair, if there are any questions, be happy to answer them.
Still no questions?
Thank you.
Good, thanks, Greg.
Thank you. Mr. Nottoli?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, with no questions, then I would thank our staff for their work and certainly the applicant, and move the staff recommendation as outlined in our staff report, including the environmental determination.
Second, please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Serna voting no. And item 55, no place like home update, homeless plan and development selection process.
Good afternoon, Chair Peters and members of the board. Cindy Kavanaugh, Director of Homeless Initiatives. I'm here today with Uma Zikovsky, representing Behavioral Health Services, as well as Christine Weichert from Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. This is an update item on the no place like home funding, the homeless plan and the development selection process. And I have a relatively short presentation. No place like home is state funding that was passed in 2016 that will provide $2 billion statewide in bond financing for permanent supportive housing for people experiencing homelessness and also serious mental illness. It is repaid, the bond is repaid through Mental Health Services Act funding, which will divert about 7% of money that was previously flowing to counties for MHSA services. The funding is dependent on a November ballot measure for approval. Just as a quick reminder, permanent supportive housing and under no place like home is affordable housing with onsite and offsite services, voluntary services. This particular program requires the county to commit to 20 years of mental health services for the no place like home tenants, and to coordinate through the lead service provider other necessary services. The funding involves housing developments that could be through acquisition, new development, or rehabilitation. The county is in a good position to pursue this funding. We have done through MHSA previous supportive housing projects since 2008 that have invested 15 million and eight developments, resulting in 161 units for this population and 603 total units. This funding has both a non-competitive and a competitive component. The county is eligible for up to about 4.9 million under the non-competitive and can compete as a large county in a funding range that's not yet determined because of how other counties have to opt in or out. Neither of these funding streams are out yet, but pieces of information are flowing on each of them, so these dates in here are tentative. Actually, the non-competitive dates are less, are longer, lengthier than the first round of competitive funding, which we expect to be rather quick-paced. The funding requires a homeless plan to be adopted by the board within the past five years, within state parameters that they've detailed. It's not just a no place like home plan, it's actually a countywide homeless plan. And we have been working with that, working on that with, with several county departments focused on it, but actually with all of the county departments and a number of stakeholders, but we have engaged consultant services to help us. The state requires a rather collaborative process to detail our understanding of the population, both the no place like home target population and more generally, to inventory existing efforts throughout the county, not just county-specific efforts, to identify resources allocated to the problem, identify critical gaps, and to set community goals, strategies, and activities. We will do this within the framework of the county homeless initiatives, as well as other activities undertaken throughout the county and within the cities. Rather aggressive timelines so that we can be in position to apply in the first competitive round, and we are in the process now of extensive stakeholder engagement, which is outlined in the board letter, in data, data analysis with draft plan to be taken back to the community in September, October, and presented to the board in October. This, this program is different in the, in that the county will be a co-applicant with the development sponsor. Typically, developers apply to the state on their own without the county as an actual applicant. So we have developed, in collaboration with SHRA, a co-application selection process. And the goal is to identify supportive housing for both the competitive and non-competitive funding, to create a streamlined competition that aligns funding to the extent we can. Funding is needed for not just the capital, but for the services and operating. And through this process, we help to create some confidence so that the development community is willing to invest and pursue this, this type of development. We've largely mirrored the factors in the state program so that our developments can compete. I'm only going to highlight a few of these. Most of them are, several of them are fairly straightforward, like we want the project to be financially feasible. But some of that I will highlight is the project integration. So we're expecting about 30, 30% to 49% of the units within a development to be for the target population. So we want an integration, not only within the community, but within the development itself. The county will be the lead service provider for purposes of applying to the state, and then later in the process will use its process to identify nonprofit providers who will actually deliver the services in the projects. And we will require onsite space for mental health services, as well as some other architectural features that really facilitate integration and community engagement of the tenant population. So that leaves the competitive factors to really be these four. What's the team experience with permanent supportive housing in this population? How much local? How much local capital is the project able to leverage? What's the cost per No Place Like Home unit? And how ready is the project to proceed?
Before you leave that slide, Mr. Natoli has a question.
Yeah, just a question. So on the project integration, what is anticipated that the other 70 to 51% of the project units, are they market rate units? Or what is it when you, you know, in an apartment complex, I know we've had, you know, very low, extremely low is a part of projects that had affordability to them. We've also had affordable units combined with market rate units, you know, depending upon the state financing and other sources of funding. So what is envisioned here? If you, I'm assuming it's a multifamily complex, but maybe not. So how do you, how do they pay for the rest of it? And what are you, what's being envisioned when you say integration?
So it can be any of those. It could be mixed with market rate units, with affordable units, or with other permanent supportive housing units, but not restricted to this population. I'm going to look at Christine to shake her head, and I would say, I think what we most commonly see is a full permanent supportive housing project, or mixed with affordable. So not likely to be mixed with just market rate housing because of the financing. But they will finance it similar to how these units are financed. For example, they may get a 9% or 4% tax credit for the entire development. They may look for other sources of funding if they need services in the other units. They will, like they always do, piece together multiple funding streams.
So to what you said, though, so that in all likelihood, you can, I guess you can fine line what integration means, but you're going to be looking at units that probably have supportive housing arrangements as a part of, and this may require a higher or lesser degree of support or some distinction. But you're really not looking at market rate or, say, the 4% affordable complex. You're looking at something that would be carve out for the very low income homeless population, mentally ill.
The projects could be integrated with 4% or 9% not supportive housing, just affordable housing. That could work financing-wise. Christine, do you want to come down and add to it?
And the reason I'm asking a question is because, you know, there's competition for this funding, but those other funding sources are, as we already know from, you know, other reports that we get and what we see in the news, you know, there's a great demand. And so how do you piece this together? And you might be able to get qualified for the piece that we're going to go for here. But the other stuff, you know, think about projects that we've seen this place board, where there's been two and three and four application cycles before we ever hit.
It's definitely a challenge. The law does limit it to no more than 49%. So that is within the law of No Place Like Home. Do you want to add?
Well, Christine's coming up. Could you tell me why, what's the point of having, the purpose of having the county be the co-applicant?
The program, I think the primary purpose is because of the commitment to the supportive services for this population. So the mental health services we are committing to for 20 years. As I said, we've done that before. These are MHSA services we provide. Now they will be in the context of this housing. But there is that commitment, and it was just part of the legislation.
Okay. Christine?
Sure. I'm not sure I can add much more through what Cindy already said, but I think you're absolutely right, Supervisor Natoli. I think most of these projects, because of the nature of them being a third to almost a half of them being permit supportive housing for homeless, will likely want to leverage the 9% tax credit program as well. Of course, those other half or two-thirds of the units will be affordable, but not necessarily homeless. But they, you will have to, they will have to compete at the state level for those 9% tax credits. Now, given all the leveraging of funds, the local funds is very likely will be before you as the board for gap financing from local housing trust funds or home funds for these same projects that are applying for No Place Like Home. So it's hoped that with those funds, with the No Place Like Home commitment, they will be very successful with the 9% tax credits. But as we know recently with the courtyard in, I think we had to try a couple times for that. So it might take a few rounds for those tax credits.
Can we use the VASH?
Well, the plan is, and I think Cindy's probably going to mention this later on, while it's a very separate process, we are going to be issuing next month requests for more project-based voucher proposals. So that'll be issued in September, received in October, and awarded in November, about the same time we're trying to identify these No Place Like Home. And those project-based vouchers will be targeted to homeless, or prioritized for homeless. So it's very possible that there'll be project-based vouchers with these same.
One other suggestion, again, it's obviously depend upon what the voters do in November, but you have a veterans and affordable housing bond, as we well know, again, you know, $4 billion.
Good luck getting that.
Right. But the veterans piece of it, I think in this community where we've key off of that, it would seem to me that, you know, it gets to be very competitive. But I would hopefully be positioned in recognizing that of our homeless population, certainly, I don't know about on the mentally ill side of that. But I would hope that we would, again, kind of key in, because I think we have the opportunity. Certainly, we've identified them within, you know, the homeless population. We've done some other things to provide some housing, but I see, you know, an ongoing need for permanent housing with supportive services, and I would hope we could build off of that.
Absolutely. We'll look at all the resources.
Okay, thanks.
And the second item under threshold is that there is going to be the need for leveraging both capital and operating. In fact, we did, we have been working with a variety of stakeholders. We've been working with the cities. We've been working with actually three committees of No Place Like Home. But we also presented our proposed process to the development community. Their main feedback was the vouchers are essential. And if they had some alignment of that, although we can't guarantee it, or other operating subsidies, that really goes a long way for feasibility. We also heard that even though it is a competitive process, be sure to offer technical assistance both before and after along the way, and that is our intention, so that we can help developments be ready to compete. And developers also requested that we identify the lead service provider as early as possible in the process. So we'll be incorporating all of this feedback in the process that we create. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Any further questions? No? Okay, you're getting away lucky, and this is a receive and file. Thank you. Thanks for coming over, Christine. Okay, item 56.
Our nominations, item 56. You are continuing to September 25th, the Sacramento County Bicycle Advisory Committee, South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And for your matters today, Adult and Aging Commission.
Chief recommends nominating Maria Padilla Castro to the Adult and Aging Commission, and continue the remainder to September 25th.
Developmental Disabilities Planning Advisory Council.
Chief recommends Arida Guntri to the professional representative seat, and requests the process be waived.
Please vote.
And continue the remainder to October 16th.
Okay. Unanimous vote. North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council.
For District 3, continue to September 11th.
For District 4, continue to October 16, please.
Okay. Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council.
I nominate Diane Ebbett.
Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board.
Chief recommends appointing Jag Nagendra to the public representative seat, and continue the remainder to October 16th.
Sacramento County Mental Health Board.
District 1 is recommending the nomination of Tiny Co-Patrick, and would like to waive the process.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And then we have the Veterans Advisory Commission.
District 3 would like to nominate John Rochelle.
Supervisor Natoli?
District 5, we had one late applicant, I still need the interview, so I would put mine over till September 11th.
And that concludes your nominations.
Okay. Mr. Kindness Executive?
No comments.
Okay. Supervisors, Sue Frost?
I have a request, Nav. I've noticed in the last couple county supervisor races that there's a lot of money that is spent in the form of independent expenditures. And when I went back and looked and did a little bit of research, it looks like the campaign finance laws for the county have been amended, as I think the latest amendment was in 1986. And so I'm wondering if staff can go back and look at our county's campaign finance laws, and bring back maybe a workshop or some information relating to, you know, what those were intended to do, and if they're doing that, and so that our board can have a conversation about possibly updating campaign finance laws for Sacramento County.
Yep, I can do that.
And Mr. Natoli, Natoli has a, is it on the same subject?
No.
Okay, different subject. Okay.
Good, I will work on that.
Thank you.
And report back.
Thank you. Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of quick items. One being, I believe we all received correspondence from several interested parties relative to the Voters' Choice Act, and some of the work that was done preparing for the June election, and kind of a after-election analysis, at least from their perspective. In my briefing yesterday, I asked Nav if it be possible before the November election to have an update. We've seen, obviously, the written results and the canvass of the election, but I think relative to, we had some conversation in the spring about, you know, maybe a couple other voter vote center sites, and there've been some other suggestions relative to the conduct of the election in November. Again, I know time is short, and so, and I just think it's important that in acknowledging the correspondence, maybe have a brief report to the board about, you know, what went well, where we might be making any changes for vote centers or otherwise, or, you know, I know that the libraries, folks are going to make sure that they have more drop center availability and time, you know, timing for that as well. So I just think it'd be helpful, maybe for September 11th, if we could have a brief, you know, update report, and I think in response, obviously, to the interest that we've seen. And again, obviously, voter turnout was improved, and that's a good thing. And so I think in that sense, it was, you know, a big success.
Okay.
Okay. And then the other follow-on was, again, recognizing that, you know, there's busy and draws upon people's time for, but after the July 4th celebrations in our community, I know that there was, certainly to this supervisor, concerns expressed about, you know, illegal fireworks and what, and certainly, in some aspects, I guess, legal fireworks. And I think with the fire season being what it's been, that height of concern remains, at least from that perspective. Yeah, I know, again, it's only been a short amount of time since we had the discussion, but one of the things that we talked about was maybe having you call folks together and, you know, looking at what we might do. And so I just was curious, any progress has been made?
Some progress has been made. I met with the Metro Fire Chief. They are the chair for the Fire Task Force. They're going to reconvene the group with the sheriff of city, Sacramento, police, and other fire agencies, particularly around the question of illegal fireworks, what can we do enforcement? And also, what I discussed with them is to have a formal presentation to the board about what can we do about the issue that we've been faced with. So we're, I don't have a date right now, but it is sometime in the fall that I plan on bringing that back.
That's good. Okay, thanks.
Anybody over here?
I just wanted to follow up on Supervisor Natoli. You know, they might want to include some kind of investigation into what other jurisdictions do, because we can't be alone in this thing.
I'll pass that along to them.
Good point.
No one else? Any other business before? Is that clear?
No, nothing on my end.
All right, meeting adjourned.